Este debate está patrocinado por una organización llamada TRUTH, que es la Unión Justa y Harmonia. TRUTH es una organización que realmente no tiene base local. Pero lo que nos preocupa es la general condición del mundo, en particular los Estados Unidos, específicamente Carolina del Norte. Lo que estamos buscando hacer es invitar a más gente local con política. Hemos organizado debates en Elizabeta City, hemos organizado debates en Hurford, Carolina del Norte, y estamos enfocados ahora en la zona de Ahoski. Estamos tratando de aumentar la cantidad de interacción entre los políticos y los candidatos, y los ciudadanos. Porque vimos que hay una gran falla. La mayoría de nuestros problemas en este país hoy en día están relacionados con la falta de comunicación pobre que está sucediendo, ya sea que seas político, o sea que seas pastor, o sea cualquier caso que sea. Así que lo que estamos tratando de hacer es aumentar la cantidad de comunicación que estamos viendo a nivel político, para que podamos mejorar y fortalecer al país como un todo. Ese es el número uno. Número dos, en realidad soy Tony Reddick, y voy a moderar, como he dicho. Y vamos a empezar desde el principio. Solo quiero dejar que sepas quién realmente está patrocinando esto. TRUTH está patrocinando esto, la Unión Justa y Harmonia. Y nuestro propósito en patrocinar esto es educar, iluminar, familiarizar y formar a los ciudadanos estadounidenses más allá de los políticos locales que están corriendo en su región. Estamos tratando de mejorar ese proceso. Ahora, vamos a entrar directamente en ello. Así que cada candidato tendrá dos minutos para hacer una introducción o declaración de plataforma. Y vamos a empezar con David Robertson, a mi izquierda. Él tiene dos minutos para presentarse y para decirnos sobre su plataforma, y para decirnos por qué deberíamos votar por él como candidato del Ayuntamiento de la Cámara. Sr. Robertson, dos minutos.
Gracias, Tony Reddick, gracias por TRUTH, invitándote a este plató esta noche. Buenas noches a todos ustedes. Mi nombre es David Robertson. Soy miembro del ayuntamiento de Hurford. He residido en Ahoski durante los últimos 20 años. Soy estudiante de la escuela secundaria y graduado en negocios. Tío y abuelo, tres hermanos maravillosos. Estoy buscando el cargo de Ayuntamiento de la Cámara por varias razones. Y el lejano Sheriff Whitford Hardy, que falleció hace unos meses. Es mi abuelo y mi mentor. Trabajó en la Junta de Ayuntamiento de la Cámara. Y antes de que falleciera, me prometió que cuando la posición de Ahoski fuera abierta, que yo buscaría ese cargo y llevaría donde quedaba. También tengo una preocupación genuina sobre los ciudadanos de Ahoski y cómo funciona la vida. Y es por eso que estoy buscando el cargo de Ayuntamiento de la Cámara, para que pueda unirme a las fuerzas de aquellos que están sentados para dar un cambio. Gracias.
Sr. Kirkland.
Buenas noches. Ya que todos tienen un bio que dejé por la puerta, voy a saltar así si esto está bien con todos. Todos ustedes me conocen desde hace años, y he estado lidiando con el Ayuntamiento por más de ocho años. Conozcan a su candidato. Quien voten por este noviembre 7º hará cambiar el futuro, prosperidad, seguridad y seguridad que nosotros, nuestros hijos y nuestros hermanos, vamos a disfrutar o no disfrutar. Juntos podemos arreglar lo que está roto y reconstruir Ahoski. Arreglar nuestro presupuesto, limpiar nuestros barrios, deshacer las drogas y los賊s de nuestra reducción del crimen, traer nuevas empresas, industrias, expandir las existentes, apoyar a nuestros primeros respondientes, tales como el asalto y la policía, continuar reconstruyendo la calle principal, apoyarnos mutuamente y no permitirnos dividirnos en racial, género, riqueza. En lugar de eso, ser unidos en todo lo que hacemos para el bien de cada ciudadano y negocio de Ahoski. Para empezar, reconstruiremos el confianza entre los ciudadanos, las empresas y el Ayuntamiento de la Cámara que ha perdido durante los años. Deben saber que los candidatos han asistido a las reuniones de la Cámara durante un año o más consistentemente antes de estar engajados, haciendo cosas para los ciudadanos y las empresas, antes de correr por el cargo. Nosotros como el pueblo hemos sido electos candidatos que nunca han estado en una reunión de la Cámara antes de firmar, y miran el mensaje que estamos en con nuestro presupuesto y la pérdida de empresas que estamos perdiendo en el pueblo. Sí, a los que corren por el cargo y los que quieren mantener el cargo no oyen su voz para entender. En lugar de eso, solo oyen para responder. He estado preocupado siempre con Ahoski. He trabajado con el Ayuntamiento durante ocho años. He tomado la tarea cuando han hecho cosas que no deberían haber hecho. Lo he homenajeado cuando han hecho cosas que han hecho bien, lo cual es muy raro recientemente. Y tengo muchas más ideas que discutiremos aquí en unos minutos sobre el presupuesto y otras cuestiones que se enfrentan al pueblo.
Ms. Katie.
No tengo discusión. Mi nombre es Katie Pennywhite. Soy ciudadana de Ahoski cinco años. Tengo cinco hijas. Y ellas son la principal razón por la que corro. Cuando me mudé aquí, noté la falta de progreso y la falta de alguien que esté prosperando, incluso las empresas. Todas están cerrando a izquierda y derecha. Mis hijas no tienen dónde ir. No hay entretenimiento, no hay nada seguro para ellas hacer. Y no les permito que simplemente se diviertan en las calles. Me cansé de discutir y sentarme en la línea de frente y decir, "Ellos deben hacer esto, ellos deben hacer aquello", cuando yo mismo soy culpable de no saber cuándo eran las reuniones de la Cámara. Así que decidí que quería correr por el cargo. Y sí, acabo de empezar las reuniones de la Cámara. Pero no creo que eso tenga un efecto en si vas a ser una buena persona en el cargo una vez que estés allí. Quiero estar allí para que pueda hacer algo por los ciudadanos que están ahí. Quiero ser un representante. No quiero hacer cosas por mí mismo, no es solo para mí. Quiero poder escuchar las preocupaciones de todos y ser lo que supuestamente debemos ser, una democracia y representar al pueblo de Ahoski.
Hola, ¿cómo están ustedes? Mi nombre es Stuart Fields. Me mudé a Ahoski en 2003. Y cuando me mudé aquí, con la idea de que esto es una ciudad y un pueblo bonito. Y quería entrar y sentarme con todos y simplemente jugar mi parte. Pero mientras he estado aquí, he visto que hemos elegido oficiales que han olvidado sobre los ciudadanos. Así que decidí correr para servir a todos, los ciudadanos. Porque como oficial electo, es nuestro trabajo servir a los ciudadanos y cumplir con la voluntad de los ciudadanos. Y por alguna razón, ha perdido. Así que voy a ser honesto. No soy ningún candidato tradicional. Soy un trabajador cotidiano, trabajador de pelo, como ustedes. Voy a trabajar de 9 a 5 cada día. Tengo hijos, tengo cuidado de mis hijos. Soy un hombre de familia y amo a mi familia. Pero cuando veo la dirección del pueblo de Ahoski, 21 millones de dólares en deuda. Están cerrando la red. Quiero decir, la factura de agua es indignante. Está en un punto en el que necesitamos hacer cambios. Y mientras permanezcais en la línea de frente y permitan a los mismos oficiales seguir uniendo, cometiendo los mismos errores, no va a salir bien. Así que estoy aquí para restaurar la esperanza. Eso es lo que estoy aquí. Estoy aquí para restaurar la esperanza a los ciudadanos porque voy a luchar por los ciudadanos a todo costo. Y gracias a todos.
Vamos a entrar directamente en ello. Ahora, cuando hago la pregunta, por favor entiendan que estoy haciendo preguntas específicas. Queremos que se den respuestas específicas y lidiar con las preguntas específicas. David fue primero, esta es para Donald. Recientemente, hubo un gran anuncio hecho en Ahoski, en todo el área, que ha sido publicado en todos los periódicos y todo. Que Ahoski va a cerrar la sede de recreación, el Recrelo. El gerente del pueblo ha evaluado que ahorrará aproximadamente 200,000 dólares en beneficios y costos por año. Donald, ¿cuál es tu posición en eso? ¿Cuál es tu opinión en eso?
Financialmente, fue un movimiento sano.
¿Fue un movimiento...?
Un movimiento sano.
¿Sano?
Sano.
Están de acuerdo, pero el proceso no está de acuerdo. ¿Debería haber sido analizado a lo largo del curso de tiempo?
Debido a que ha sido analizado al menos este año, a partir del inicio del verano, para darnos suficiente tiempo para averiguar cuál será nuestro presupuesto para el próximo año fiscal. Así que de esa manera, al final de ese, para el año fiscal 2018, 2019, sabremos cuál será nuestro presupuesto cuando lleguemos a junio, cuando se aprobará el presupuesto, lo cual debe ser hecho el 30 de junio. Sabremos eso cuando hagan el auditorio en los próximos meses de los libros del pueblo. Sabremos mejor dónde estamos cuando se trata de nuestro dinero. Podríamos haberlo analizado y tenido, como dije, solo teníamos dos empleados. Eso habría sido suficiente para asegurarnos de que algunos de los parques se mantuvieron cortados, que algunas de las otras áreas se mantuvieron limpias. Vamos a hacer una referencia a la calle principal de Mirko aquí. He estado allí, la tierra es cuatro pies alta allí. Los niños no podrían ir a jugar en ese parque. Hice una conversación con el gerente del pueblo, y el día siguiente se cortó. Pero de nuevo, he construido retor sobre ocho años en lidiar con cuestiones como esta, especialmente cuando se trata de la red.
Katie, misma pregunta. ¿Están de acuerdo con el movimiento que se hizo recientemente por el pueblo?
No.
Y si no están de acuerdo, ¿por qué?
Absolutamente no estoy de acuerdo. Como dije antes, no hay nada para los niños hacer, absolutamente nada, excepto la red. Mis chicas no hacen deportes, por eso no van a la red, pero muchos otros niños lo hacen. Si esta es la única instalación que los niños tienen, ¿por qué en el mundo? Entiendo que en cuanto a dinero, habría sido, como dije, un movimiento sano de hacer, pero podrían haber cortado algo más. Podrían haber intentado obtener grantes. Quiero decir, la última reunión de la Cámara en la que fuimos, McDuffie estaba hablando de los 21 millones que estaban en deuda, pero está por obtener un préstamo para comprar nuevas carros de policía. ¿Por qué no obtener ese préstamo y hacer algo por los niños? Getar la red de vuelta en orden, eso es lo que no entiendo, eso es contradictorio. 21 millones en deuda, pero está dispuesto a obtener un préstamo para comprar carros de policía. ¿No se obtuvieron solo carros? Cuando me mudé aquí, solo obtuvieron carros. No están haciendo tanto correr y arrojar nuevos carros.
Así que Katie, usted no estaba de acuerdo con la corte.
No.
No estaba de acuerdo con la corte. Si usted fuera un miembro del Ayuntamiento de la Cámara en ese momento, ¿cómo habría contado eso? ¿Qué habría ofrecido?
Primero de todo, habría venido a los ciudadanos de Ahoski y les había dicho: "Necesitamos cortar algo, necesitamos cortar algo. Esta es la situación financiera en la que estamos, ¿qué podemos hacer?" Nunca sabes qué harán los ciudadanos. Algunos de los ciudadanos podrían haber voluntariado, algunos de los ciudadanos podrían haber ayudado a fundar. Podrían haber dado, pero simplemente no dijeron nada. Creo que cualquier y todas las solicitudes deberían haber sido tomadas, grantes. No estoy por préstamos, pero hay muchos grantes ahí fuera para revitalizar las comunidades. Incluso Walmart da grantes para revitalizar toda la comunidad. No entiendo por qué no están mirando a los grantes si no tienen el dinero.
Creo que la idea de venir ante los ciudadanos y hablar y dialogar con los ciudadanos es muy positiva. Creo que deberíamos esperar que los políticos tomaran este enfoque. Y esta es una de las cosas que necesitamos discutir. Tenemos que empezar a poner a todos nuestros políticos más responsables en relación con estas cuestiones. Stuart Fields, misma pregunta que la que hemos ido a robar a David Robertson.
Bueno, no estaba de acuerdo con ella. Creo que es la responsabilidad del pueblo ofrecer un centro de recreación a los ciudadanos. Es una falla directa al final del día. Y cuando escuchan y si leen el artículo, dicen que iban a tomar 225,000 dólares del dinero del centro de recreación y ponerlo hacia el parque de la escuera de Ahoski, que es un parque seasonal que va a estar en el hospital. Así que cuando lo vi, investigué. Así que lo que quería ver es que el pueblo de Ahoski, ¿dónde está? Para 225,000 dólares para construir el parque de la escuera, el parque de la escuera solo cuesta 275,000 dólares para correr. Así que estoy bien con los números, 225,000 para la grana. Ahora van a tomar 225,000 de un centro de recreación. Bueno, eso es 450,000 dólares si se supone que yo tenía. Pero usted dijo que solo cuesta 250,000 dólares para correr el parque de la escuera. Así que creo que necesitamos pedirles un auditorio del dinero. Eso es lo que personalmente pienso. Porque es algo que está sucediendo oficialmente con el dinero en cuanto al centro de recreación.
Stuart, usted opone, pero mi pregunta, entendiendo que el deuda es, ¿cuánto? 21 millones de dólares. Esto es lo que estamos lidiando. ¿De dónde viene el dinero? Entiendo su oposición. ¿De dónde viene el dinero? ¿Cómo se mantiene la red open? ¿Quién la va a sumergir? ¿Quién la va a pagar los trabajadores? ¿Cómo lo van a hacer?
Bueno, había diferentes formas, como estamos en una crisis de presupuesto, ¿verdad? Tienen diferentes formas de reducir el presupuesto. O hay otras formas de aumentar el ingreso. Como tenemos algunas grandes empresas, odio decirlo, pero seré real. Tal vez necesitábamos aumentar los impuestos sobre algunas de estas grandes empresas que pueden permitirse los impuestos ser aumentados temporalmente. Porque la red afectó al menor ingreso, el bloqueo inferior de los ciudadanos. Eso es lo que afectó. Y ahora, ya que han cerrado la red, están reclamando por un aumento de los ciudadanos que ahora van al parque. Pero, ¿dónde creen que los niños van? Parece que están haciendo cortes, pero no están poniendo faces a los números. Así que están reduciendo el presupuesto, pero no poniendo faces a los números. Así que solo están reduciendo los números, y eso tiene tiempo.
David.
Realmente no tengo mucha información sobre la cerración de la red.
Okay.
Hice una reunión con el Sr. McDuffie esta semana para discutir algunas cosas sobre la factura de agua y el déficit de 21 millones de dólares. Y por supuesto, la gente siempre trata de pasar el dinero. Él no estaba aquí, y esto se acumuló con el gerente del pueblo antes de él. Pero lo que él estaba haciendo era tratar de consolidar esos 21 millones de dólares y pagarlo. Y creo que fue en la última reunión, hubo una que se publicó en el boleto ahora, que fue firme. Y uno de los deuda fue pagado, pagando los pequeños para que puedan llegar a un punto en el que puedan pagar los deudas mayores. Y hice una conversación con él sobre hacer algo, tener un centro de recreación abierto para ustedes. Y él me convenció de que era imposible que eso sucediera en este momento con todo lo que tiene el pueblo de Ahoski sucediendo.
Así que, ¿están de acuerdo con él o no están?
No, no lo apoyo. Necesitan tener algún tipo de actividad recreacional, educacional.
Tengo algunos adaltes a esto. Saben, si no invertimos en nuestra juventud, las personas equivocadas lo harán. Tenemos que hacer más esfuerzos conscientes en apoyar a nuestra juventud. Uno de los adaltes que tengo es bastante simple. Algunas de las grandes corporaciones en Ahoski y en las áreas circundantes, inversores, empresarios, le encantaría contribuir al centro de la red. No solo eso, no sé cuántas iglesias tienen Ahoski, pero creo que probablemente encontrarían que las iglesias estarían dispuestas a contribuir al centro de la red. Y la razón por la que, la gente se ríe, lo siento. La razón por la que digo eso, no, la razón por la que digo eso es porque hay muchos casos en el pasado en los que las empresas se meten cuando el presupuesto comienza a caer en pequeños pueblos. Y creo que no solo eso, los voluntarios también pueden meterse. Porque si no empiezan a invertir en la juventud y continúan invirtiendo en la juventud, quién te va a cuidar más tarde. Este es el tipo de cosas que tenemos que empezar a pensar. Ahora, volvamos a lo contrario. Tenemos otra pregunta. La pregunta que tengo después, vamos a entrar directamente. Vamos a lidiar con algunos trabajos por segundo. ¿Están bien hasta ahora?
Bueno, puedo responder muchas de las preguntas que les preguntaron sobre el presupuesto. En realidad, se discutió en enero sobre el presupuesto y los déficits y cómo íbamos a hacer las cortes para hacerlos end meet.
Okay.
A partir de junio, creo el 15, más o menos, no teníamos suficiente dinero en nuestro presupuesto para pagar el salario del personal y nuestros deudas en el pueblo.
Okay.
El nuevo gerente del pueblo tuvo que sacar 500,000 dólares que teníamos en el banco, que es parte de nuestros 8% de fondos de potencia requeridos por la ley estatal para hacer las pagadas de las deudas. A partir de agosto 15, tendríamos aproximadamente 76,000 dólares en deuda basado en los números que teníamos en el pueblo. Las cortes debían ser hechas. Ya habíamos pagado decenas de miles de dólares de cortes como pueblo a través de nuestro departamento de agua, departamento de la ciudadanía, departamento de la montaña, cada departamento que se pueda pensar. Hasta el punto de que si se cortan más, comenzarán a cortar más servicios para el pueblo. Servicios que necesitamos. El departamento de recreación estaba desperdiciando dinero. La grana que él estaba haciendo, el parque de agua de lo que estaba hablando, era un parque de agua de 250,000 dólares. Pero si vas a Rocky Mountain, construyeron allí 65,000 dólares. Y eso es casi cuatro veces el tamaño de lo que tenemos ahora. El que no es, es mayor que el nuestro y cuesta un tercio de eso. Estamos desperdiciando dinero. Y eso va de nuevo a cuando el presupuesto, lo que presentamos, teníamos un millón más, un millón y 8000 dólares en el fondo general que salieron en unos pocos meses, nos daban 26,000 dólares en sinking deep. Todo porque los números de la oficina de finanzas, la hoja de spreadsheets fueron erróneas, cuando el gerente del pueblo lo falló, el Ayuntamiento de la Cámara. No hicieron su propia legislatura, lo expusieron, dejaron sin controlar a todos. Así que estamos en la posición en la que estamos.
Creo que mucho de lo que están diciendo tiene mucho sentido. Vamos a pasar a la otra parte aquí. Así que sabemos que los trabajos están conectados a todo esto, ¿verdad?, francamente. Y como candidatos corriendo por el Ayuntamiento de la Cámara, tienes que ser knowledgeable, tienes que tener experiencia y comprensión de cómo crear trabajos. Porque si estás corriendo con un deuda de 21 millones de dólares, tienes que encontrar una forma de crear en el lado del trabajo para compensar eso. Okay, aumentar los impuestos es una opción, pero la mayoría de la gente puede que no necesariamente quiera estar de lado con eso. La mayoría de la gente preferiría que se crearan trabajos, ¿verdad? Así que actualmente, Ahoski tiene una tasa de desempleo de alrededor de 6.9%. La media nacional es de alrededor de 4.7% de la tasa de desempleo. Pero sabemos, como audiencia, como ciudadanos aquí en Ahoski, que la tasa de desempleo es mucho mayor que eso. La gente dejó de reportar a lo largo del tiempo, todos entendemos eso. Así que con la tasa de desempleo siendo tan alta como es, incluso en el 6.9%, es 2.1% más que la media nacional, ¿okay? Y esto es un problema. Así que mi pregunta ahora, Katie, usted es la primera, viene a usted. ¿Cómo creamos trabajos en Ahoski?
Okay, cada pregunta que van a hacer siempre volverá a la juventud para mí, porque eso es lo que estoy pasionado por. Si tienes una instalación para niños, un verdadero centro de comunidad donde tienen clases, y tienen tutoría, y tienen deportes, tienen camps, tienen todo tipo de cosas. Si transforman la vieja Walmart en un parque de skate o un estadio de boliche para los niños, si en realidad lo renovan o dejan caer ese teatro y lo vuelven a construir, pueden tener trabajos y sus niños tendrían dónde ir. Quiero decir, es doable, igual que usted dijo. Los grantes, tenemos Newport, tenemos Purdue, tenemos, tenemos muchos lugares. Y tienen grantes, los he visto. No estoy en la posición de aplicarles. No soy un oficial. Pueden aplicar a los grantes, y estoy seguro de que estarían dispuestos, igual que usted dijo. ¿Por qué no tenemos el club de niños y niñas? ¿Por qué no tenemos un YMCA o un YWCA? ¿Por qué no tenemos ninguna de estas cosas? Nunca en mi vida entera he visto un lugar que no tenga nada seguro para los niños para ir. Si creamos más espacios seguros para los niños, tendrán trabajos. Tienen trabajos, necesitan consejeros, necesitan gente para los deportes, necesitan gente para el estadio de boliche, necesitan gente para vender en el estadio de boliche, el teatro de películas, todo esto. Todo se une, todo está coordinado, no es separado. Tienen todas estas instalaciones para los niños y su familia, no solo los niños. Los niños y su familia, y ustedes crearon trabajos. Tienes que ser un poco más creativo, un poco fuera de la caja, un poco, usted sabe, un poco cerquita, pero es doable. Quiero decir, va a tomar tiempo y va a ser mucho trabajo, pero es doable.
Stuart, misma pregunta. 6.9% de la tasa de desempleo en Ahoski, 4.7% en el país. Sabemos que hay más personas desempleadas que el 6.9% de Ahoski. ¿Qué más debemos hacer?
Bueno, para mejorar los trabajos, tienes que mejorar la educación. Porque tienes empresas que están dispuestas a venir al pueblo de Ahoski, pero puede que no tengas la fuerza laboral que pueda realmente trabajar en el trabajo. Así que los trabajos y la educación van de mano conmigo. Si mejoras la educación, ahora tienes empleados capacitados que pueden trabajar algunos de estos trabajos. Ahora, déjenme decirles algo. El estado de Carolina del Norte tiene un programa de crédito de 3J de impuestos en el que permitirían a nuevas empresas venir al estado de Carolina del Norte y darles cinco años sin impuestos. Los primeros cinco años, no tienen que pagar impuestos si se mueven al estado de Carolina del Norte y si emplean a ciudadanos del estado de Carolina del Norte. Así que creo que necesitamos entrar en eso. Ahora, el nombre de este artículo del estado es el artículo del estado 3J, si quieren verlo. Se llama el programa de crédito de impuestos del estado que ofrece el estado a cualquier empresa de ingresos que venga al estado de Carolina del Norte. Así que por uno, necesitamos abrir eso y verlo y ofrecer eso a algunas empresas que estén dispuestas a venir. Y también tenemos que conseguir gente que permitirá que las empresas entren. Porque ahora tenemos gente en las juntas que no permitirían que nuevas empresas entren porque están muy preocupadas por la competencia. Están preocupadas por que puede herir su bolsillo. Y así que no quieren que estas nuevas empresas entren, así que se estipulan el crecimiento. Quiero decir, cuando estás en la calle principal, tienes edificios que simplemente están ahí gastándose. Y los propietarios de estos edificios no los rentaban a ciertas personas. Prefieren simplemente sentarse ahí y bajar, en lugar de permitir que otras personas inviertan en estas empresas. Tienes Just Save que se cerró. Uptown Cafe en la calle principal que se cerró. Así que las empresas están saliendo. Necesitamos aumentar las empresas que entran. Así que tenemos que cambiar todo en Ahoski para hacer cambios.
Quiero dialogar con ustedes brevemente aquí por un segundo. Está omitiendo algo muy poderoso. Dijo que los trabajos están vinculados a la educación. Ahora, como usted sabe, el estado de Carolina del Norte está pesado en el programa STEM. En todas partes que vas, escuchan hablar de matemáticas. En el pueblo de Ahoski, la gente está haciendo matemáticas alrededor de 18.1%. La media estadounidense es 42%. La mayoría de los trabajos hoy son basados en matemáticas y ciencias. Si estos trabajos son basados en matemáticas y ciencias y Ahoski está haciendo 18%, eso significa que de los 100%, Ahoski está haciendo 18.1%. Ahora, cuando empiecen a mirar las demográficas más cerca, los números de los hombres africanos americanos son más o menos 6 y 7%. Vengo directo a usted con esta pregunta. Como hombre afroamericano, ¿qué haría para cambiar eso?
Ahora, para cambiarlo, por uno, tenemos que conseguir, odio decirlo, y voy a ser honesto.
Ahora, esta es su plataforma.
Soy un chico directo.
Lo que usted dice es lo que la gente va a entender sobre usted y su plataforma.
Soy un chico directo. La junta de educación, esto es una cuestión de condado. La junta de educación, odio decirlo, pero algunas de las personas en la junta necesitan retirarse. Necesitan retirarse. Porque ya no están en contacto con la sociedad de hoy. Y están reteniendo los sistemas escolares de la actualización. Ahora, usted ha mencionado el STEM, ¿verdad? El sistema de ciencias. Ahora, con las matemáticas, les voy a decir, quiero decir esto. Las personas que están en la junta necesitan retirarse gratificadamente y dejar que las personas jóvenes entren, quienes puedan venir con algunas ideas mejores. Y también, puede que necesitemos empezar a hacer algunos de nuestros propios cursos. No podemos permitir que solo las escuelas hagan todo el aprendizaje. Puede que necesitemos establecer programas de tutoría o nuestras propias academias donde podemos tutorizar a los niños a nosotros mismos para que podamos concentrarnos en algunas de estas áreas que necesitamos mejorar. Así que creo que necesitamos programas after school. Creo que necesitamos trabajar con otros, especialmente los complejos de apartamentos donde podemos encontrar un par de lugares justo ahí donde podemos empezar a implementar programas after school. Usted sabe, y creo que eso realmente ayudará.
Sí, quiero decir también que sé que el Ayuntamiento de la Cámara y la junta de educación tradicionalmente no trabajan juntos. Pero cuando tienes problemas tan extremos como vemos en estos pueblos como Ahoski y el noreste de Carolina del Norte en general, tienes que tomar medidas extremas, ¿verdad? Una de las cosas que creo que cualquier persona del Ayuntamiento de la Cámara tendrá que hacer es tener el sabio para poder cruzar a la condado y lidiar con estos oficiales porque las cuestiones son tan serias. Y creo que lo que está sucediendo es que la mayoría de la gente que está en el noreste de Carolina del Norte está demasiado relajada con estas cuestiones. La gente no se da cuenta de las implicancias que están asociadas con la generación fallida de jóvenes. Serán sorprendidos cuando se sienten y hablan con jóvenes y les dan a los 6, 7, 8 graderas. You'd be surprised when you sit down and you talk to young people, and you give them a simple, six, seven, eighth graders. What is three times nine? They don't know. Then when you look at the stats, the stats are consistent with what we're seeing with the youth. Uh, Dave, same question, that, uh, we've been posing, everybody else has been answering. Six point nine percent unemployment rate in Ahoski, nationally, four point seven. How do we create jobs, David? What do we do? Where we gonna get the money from? Where people gonna work? Why do you wanna run? You talked about that part. But where we gonna get the money from? How do we create jobs? What do we do?
Well, brother Ricky, I think, first of all, we need to have people in place that will allow, um, industries and businesses to come into our area. Um, and you know, the city council, they pretty much control that, what we, what come into our area. So, we need to have people in place, such as myself, that can vote and, uh, research, and do some innovative, uh, networking, industries to come here or wanna come here, and to provide jobs for our young people. So that our young people, uh, such as my children, that children will have to always graduate and move away to get good paying jobs. I'd like to see that here, but, uh, it so happens. You're a handicap.
So, you agree with Phil, that the board members are a big part of the problem, along with the government? And I think Katie, all of you are saying the same thing, so essentially, that's why you all wanna run, which makes sense to me. Let me offer this as an add-on. With business, one of the things that we don't see in small towns is that we don't see business coalitions built across municipalities. This is what I mean. I worked in Silicon Valley for a long time. The best business minds in the world. California at one point had the third largest economy in the world. Second. Europe was second, California third, United States was first. But what made them so brilliant wasn't the politicians per se, it was the fact that they built alliances with the business community. The add-on, whoever gets on city council, however you get, I think it's important that you start building alliances with business owners within the community. Those business owners should be meeting with you regularly. Meeting with you regularly to discuss the climate of the business. How can you increase business? How can they grow their businesses? The steel company here, what's the name of it?
New Gold.
I don't know that anybody's meeting with them on a regular basis. Here's the scary thing. Are they gonna pull out in two years? These are real issues. Why am I saying that? Because we know that most of our steel is coming from China. So, are they gonna pull out in two years? We have to start thinking like that, because if you think they're gonna pull out in two years because of declining economy, you need to be negotiating with them right now. You have better taxes perhaps is an option. But the negotiations has to start right now. You cannot wait. I would say, whether you get elected or not, doesn't matter at this point. Go and meet with them anyway. Somebody in Ahoski needs to start taking more initiative, breaking the traditional methods, and trying to make these things happen. Not just with, uh, the steel company, all companies in the area. Perhaps, look, every day after the radio show, every Wednesday, I would go, it's not a lot, but I would spend twelve dollars at the, uh, the cafe. Every Wednesday, I made an appointment. They're not there now. Right? They're not there. Who's gonna fill that slot? Now, this is my twelve dollars, but the fact of the matter, every Wednesday, I spend it, right? So, I'm saying that we have to take more initiative. City council members, if you hear about a business closing, somebody should knock on their door. What are you closing for? What can we do to keep you here? What can we do? One of the reasons why Chinese economy, Chinese economy is spiraling so aggressively, well, their, their growth rate now is about seven percent, but it was up twenty percent. The reason why they're spiraling so aggressively is because the government has built alliances with business leaders. Business leaders are getting low interest rate loans from governments, and continuing to build the economy. They have the second largest economy in the world, second to the United States. Most analysts predict that by 2020, they will be larger than the United States. But these concepts are the kinds of concepts that we have to start employing. We're back up to you, David, uh, with another question here. All of you have been saying what's happening in Texas with the flooding.
Um, I didn't get a chance to answer that, I did this part.
Oh, I, I missed that. Okay, boom, okay, go.
I'm glad you brought up that coalition. Okay, um, yesterday, I was at a meeting with the Herb County Commissioners and, um, other town, town representatives with a group, um, called CERCAP.
Uh-huh.
And they are going around doing a potable and wastewater assessment of the county, okay? Seeing where we need to expand our water lines and our wastewater lines, and what is existing that can be expanded upon to entice businesses to come to our area.
Uh-huh.
Um, it was also mentioned that there is a coalition that is being formed as we speak, uh, amongst business owners, Chamber of Commerce, and other leaders. Um, one of the things that we can do, and I've reached out to several industries, um, over the years that I've been dealing with it, is they look at Main Street, and they say, how can we come to your town, and look at your crime rate there? They said, you don't take care of Main Street, which is the lifeblood of your town.
Well, your crime rate is relatively low here compared to all the other parts of North Carolina.
And they say, when they look at our road conditions, and what can handle truck traffic, and they also look at our debt. And they look at how it's handling. And I've talked to these companies. And so many of these companies I've talked to, let's take One Gun Man Flacher up north, I won't mention names. They employ four hundred people. They come here because they're looking for a new home. Get them to build here, they bring one hundred of their own people, they hire three hundred here. That gives three hundred high paying jobs, eighteen dollars an hour. You get-
This is a good made question.
Right. Then you get spur of business that will hire anywhere from two hundred seventy five to four hundred extra people. All that money goes into the local economy because they spend their dollars locally. That money goes back to the town, which builds towns coffers where we can get out of debt, start going back to our, getting our recreational department back up and running, start getting the things that we need done. Um, the problem we have is the council is blocked every move when trying to get your businesses to come here. Talking about the tax thing, Eviva came here. The state does offer a five year tax rate, uh, in, uh, decrease during the five years we build. Eviva came into an existing plant. The town gave them a five year pro-rated tax rate where it started off at zero and eventually rounded its way up to a hundred percent. They were gonna expand it. But because of the waterway, the wastewater cost to them is such an amount that they said they would not expand their plant unless the town does something about it. Because the majority of their water is evaporated, doesn't go into the sewer. I hear this from several of businesses. Just Save closed. I actually talked to them. They closed because when Walmart came, originally, it was fine. When they introduced the new Walmart with the grocery section, they started implementing a freebie program where they gave you free groceries and free prizes every month. It was costing them three thousand dollars a month. That was coming out of their pocket. It was no longer financially feasible for them to stay here because of their profit loss margin, um, based on their, their current operating cost.
Okay. Give me about fifteen more minutes, then we're gonna open up the audience for questions. I wanna ask you a question. You, you can, uh, piggyback off of this. It's been about twelve to thirteen cities in the past seven to eight years that have bankruptcies in the United States. Is Ahoski getting close?
It'll- We could very easily certainly bankrupt. As long as we make the minimal payments on the twenty one million dollars, it's gonna cost us over thirty million dollars. And by the time it's paid off in 2057, without incurring any more debt, I'll be ninety one years old.
Wow, before it's paid off?
Before it's paid off. Now, with regards to police cars that I brought up, the town has a ordinance. Every five years, eighty thousand miles, a police car has to be, uh, sold off for auction, and they have to purchase a new one. The reason for that is because of the cost of maintenance.
Yeah.
These cars are always hard. Um, right now, we don't have a full-time maintenance man. They fired him a couple of years ago. We've been paying John Lewis shit, three hundred dollars an hour-
Are you serious?
For them working on our car.
Who makes systems exist?
Now, we've had a, we've had a prisoner to, that was coming to Ahoski to do some of the maintenance. The problem is, he's now out of prison. So, we no longer have that. Now, they're looking to hire someone if they have a ramping system, asking them off course. But these are the issues that, that are plaguing the town is just waste.
I, I really wish that some of the candidates, other candidates that's been on were here tonight. But Stuart, go ahead, you like-
You know, why don't you, sir, only say we can't come?
No, no, it's okay. Just give me a few seconds. I know you was like, why?
That's, um, um, you know, piggyback on what he was saying, um, about the businesses coming. It still goes to education. 'Cause when you deal with New Core, uh, most of their employees that make the good money, they don't stay in this area. They stay in Virginia.
Oh, wow.
They come from Virginia and work at New Core. So, it still goes to education, where people being able to fulfill these slots. So, you can get, um, businesses to come here, but the, the workforce ain't able to do the job.
I think those, I think that's a great opportunity for the city of Ahoski. I think that y'all should aggressively start moving people in positions, getting them up to speed with the, the math test or whatever was required, so that they can move into these jobs. It's really, it's really an attack, in my opinion. It's just as bad as outsourcing. For example,
Yeah.
American Airlines, United Airlines outsources a lot of their maintenance to China. These are American companies, right? What audacity, audacity. Wow, how could you think about that? And this is what's happening with these companies that are here and bringing employees in from other areas. This isn't a attack on the city. And you guys should not stand for this kind of stuff. But, the big problem is that we're not being informed properly. That's what they think. You got ten seconds to finish up. We're gonna go to Katie, and I'm gonna come back to David. 'Cause yeah, with the fresh question.
The only thing I was gonna say, as far as, um, with the, um, the maintenance of the police vehicles. The last time I checked, the police budget went up. It won't reduce. The last time I checked, the police budget rose. It wasn't reduced. So, as far as they may be, 'cause they're more than, I think, if I'm, I'm gonna pull it up, 'cause I don't wanna say it, but that's fine, being right in exact. But I know the budget went up. It didn't go down the last time that they had a budget increase. Now, the fire department, the reason why they reduced the fire department budget was because our fire department, the three heads was making over two hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's, yes-
You mean three physicians?
Yeah, the three physicians of the fire department was making over two hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, that's compared to, you can compare that to Goldsboro of North Carolina, at the rates at which they're playing there, and which we were paying out.
So, part of your, if you're on city council, part of your, uh, immediate action would be to cut the salary? Is that what you would do?
Well, they already doing it.
Okay, all right.
They already doing it, but this goes to accountability.
Okay.
What we need to get to, about the fact that we in this crisis, and who helped put us here.
Okay. Let's go to Katie real quick, that you had your hand up, then I'm gonna go back to David. Give me about eight more minutes, we'll be, uh, getting questions for the audience.
Um, I just wanted to go back to when we were talking about the council and how, you know, they have to, they have to want to do these things and how they're blocking. In order for the council to wanna do anything about education and cross from municipal to county and work with, they have to care. They have to care. And right now, that's not, the council itself is not even a true representation of the citizens of Ahoski. If you go and you see, the city council is just not representing us, the common people here in Ahoski. My husband works in Smithfield, Virginia. He has to drive an hour and a half, so he can make decent money, but he has to pay gas, just to have a good job. Um, he's worked in Purdue, I mean, he's worked in Purdue, he's worked at Food Lion and Dollar Store at the same time, just to make ends meet. It's absolutely ridiculous. But the, the city council, if they don't have kids of their own that are struggling and going to the public schools and failing these tests, they're not gonna do anything. These, some of these kids, I'm pretty sure either go to private school or are grown, and adults now. So, they have to care. They have to be in a situation where they're in the trenches with you guys. And most of us up here are. I'm in the trenches. My girls, they go to four different schools here. Um, and it's, it's, like I said, the council has to care. Right now, they don't care. They don't have any, they don't have any, any motivation.
It's, it's an overall, um, uh, reflection of the country as a whole. We, we probably don't agree with that. Let's go to the next question. We'll start with David, and then we'll go right down the line. David, this is a real issue. Many of you know, you've been watching the news. You see what's happening in Houston, you see what's happening in Florida with the flooding, you see what's happening in Puerto Rico. And many states, I'm sorry, and the Caribbean, right? Many states are not prepared, many cities are not prepared. So, David, the obvious question is, as a city council candidate, what would you do to better prepare Ahoski for natural disasters?
Well, I would give with, um, our county emergency services. And find out what we need to do. And I'll see the official. See what could be done to, of course, you know, we couldn't, we can't avoid tornadoes right hand. But we could, the path forward, of course. So, I would give the emergency services and find out what we can do to better, uh, prepare or be prepared.
Dr. Lee?
Currently, um, the entire county has what's called COGRI. And it's through the new nine one one system in Wynn. All of that is linked up with FEMA. FEMA is the overriding federal entity that handles anything disaster related in the area. Um, the, these towns at the preparation can give around a start cleaning out drains better. What's going on? Four more. That's part of some of the stuff that I'm doing out. Um, our wastewater, uh, areas where, where they drain, such as some of the canals and swamp areas, are so overrun, they haven't been touched in twenty years.
Oh, wow.
Um, they need, they need to clean out. That could help out a lot. But it's not just a problem locally with Ahoski. This is county-wide, the same issues. Um, but there are steps in place with the, with the town as far as being prepared for disaster as best pre-
Why is the drains being cleaned out?
For a while, the truck was broke down, we only got one vacuum truck that had to clean down manholes. The issue is not the manholes themselves. The issue is where the drains are at, where they collect the rocks and the debris stuff, the packing. They need to lift it and go in and physically clean down. Um, I've been working with the public works director, uh, Lassiter, trying to get that done. Um, we've been working on West Street right recently. Uh, he said he got it there, cleaned that up. Um, and that's been got the manhole there for better drainage. But I went by there and looked at the drain, and he didn't do what I had asked him to. But, um, the, um, another better, a way to better prepare citizens is to get out front of the store. Young people, you go stock up on your water. Protect your windows. Businesses on Main Street, you know those large plate glass windows, get out there and warm them up. You know, if you need assistance from the town to do that, ask us in advance, well, not me, ask the town council in advance, and say, hey, can we get assistance, you know, some help? 'Cause you have some business owners that live in other states that have empty buildings here. So, they don't have anyone that can do it. But they can contract with Lassiter, who will call on, they can get that done, and then they would just pay the town for whatever labor and material will be, it will be incurred for.
Hey?
Um, I think that, um, the whole infrastructure, the piping, it was brought up at the last city council meeting. Um, all the plumbing and all that stuff underground is ancient. And if we were to have a hurricane like Maria hit us, we would probably be in the same situation that Puerto Rico is in right now. And I understand that to like completely overhaul and completely, you know, upgrade everything is gonna cost a lot, and we don't have that. But that's something that has to be done. Um, we're, we're smack in the middle of hurricane season. Um, we don't get too much of that in New York. Um, this is, this is fairly new to me. Another thing is, um, we have so many churches here. And if we worked together, instead of separate, we would make a big difference. If we gave out information, some people don't know. I, I still don't know. Like I said, in New York, we had a basement, you know, or an attic. So, if it's a tornado, we go to the basement. You know, if it's a flood, we go to the attic. I don't have any of that stuff here. So, I don't even know where I can go besides the Ahoski Inn. Um, if the churches got together and they did some kind of a program, a forum, where they informed people, this is what you need to do, this is what you need to have, this is where you can go if your house is not safe. These, this is the FEMA information that you need to, the phone number, all that stuff, and FEMA is super slow. So, it's not like they're gonna, they're not gonna come in here and start, um, helping out. It's gonna take a long time before they get to you. It's gonna take a long time before you get that check from FEMA to fix anything, 'cause I've, I've been through that in New York, and it takes forever. Um, but just educating people. People don't know, I don't know. You know, educating people is the first thing that we should do.
Stuart, same question.
Well, you know, I agree with everything- Well, you know, I agree with everything everybody said. You know, I'm more of a personal responsibility. So we need to start preparing ourselves as citizens. We need to prepare ourselves. We need to know, uh, evacuation routes. We need to know where the high points are in the town. And like she said, as far as the church, we need to have the churches working together. So they can, um, how I say, have shelters for the citizens. As far as the town of Ahoski, we are like five thousand seven hundred and some feet above seagrass, on sea, on water. So we're kinda good on that area as far as flooding in the town. But we need to just be more vigilant. We need to stock up on things ourselves. We don't need to wait till it's here and then try to prepare. We need to get prepared ourselves. Uh, we need to work with the city council and know where the evacuation routes is, where are places that we can go. And we just need to be diligent. Um, that's what I personally think. I think that we need to take more responsibility ourselves. And start waiting on other people as far as to help us in them times we need.
I have a couple, just one, one and a half questions that we got from the audience. But this is a, a serious question. So here's all the, the city of Ahoski has roughly about five thousand seven hundred people. You could take fifty, a hundred, right? And just the last city council election, I think about five percent of the voting population voted.
Then you're getting somewhere, amen. Then you're getting somewhere.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is, this is serious.
So what is?
Five percent of the people. Now, my question, Stu, what is wrong? I mean, hold on a second. Now, this is, this is one side. Here's another side of it. Here's another side of it. Ahoski, the city, sixty-six percent African-American.
Mm.
Why don't they have a black mayor? I, I'm sorry. But what is wrong? It, it, so what I'm, what I'm saying is the sickness is so deep. Whether you're black or white, it's irrelevant, right? The fact of the matter is, only five percent of the population is turning out to vote. What is wrong? I mean, what is wrong? Take it.
I'm gonna tell you. The citizens don't have hope. And to be honest, um, you know, we have to take personal responsibility. I'm not the type that's gonna put some other people. We gotta take personal responsibility. Now, for some reason, whenever there's a presidential election, everybody go vote. But when it come to local elections, most people don't even know when it's going on. Because we are not taught this. We're not interested in local elections. We just not. For some odd reason, we think, we just vote for the president and everything gonna be okay. But at the end of the day, now maybe singing to the choir, cause most people here probably vote. But you know that your local politicians control the money in the town that would you stack. So that's where we need to vote. So it's a matter of, I think, lack of education. Um, the citizens don't have hope. Because the elected officials aren't representing the people. They up there for their own personal reasons. The citizens just gave up hope. So they're complaining to each other, but we have to, we, we gotta get out of this sickness. It's a sickness. Like you said, it's a sickness. And I don't wanna, wow, I don't wanna go all, well, it's a sickness that we need to fix. Cause I could, it's a lot of different areas where this sickness come from and where it stemmed from. But we need to get out of this, because if not, um, things ain't never gonna change.
Katie, we're gonna come right down and we're gonna open up to the audience. Katie.
Okay. Um, I think it goes back to education. Guess everybody should, you know, try to inform, but a lot of people just don't know. A lot of people don't know when the elections are. Um, they don't know who the candidates are. They don't know what their platforms are. Um, they don't know what the, the local government is in charge of. They don't understand what they can do, what policies and rules and regulations and what they can pass. They don't, they don't, I don't think they realize the power that the local government does have. Um, I, I think that it takes community action. I think that it takes educating people, um, on different platforms and stuff. Not just that, but there is, there is a big, um, group of elderly people that can vote. And sometimes they might not be able to get out there and vote. So I think that, you know, some, some organizations or groups should get out there and, you know, provide that ride. You need a ride to go vote. We'll take you and bring you back home. Just go out there and vote. It just makes absolutely no sense that there's still only people that are registered to vote and they don't vote. So education, community action. Vote.
And I'll honestly send you back to senators, go show up and vote, cause they're lazy.
Because they're lazy.
Cause they're lazy. And reason for that is because they don't care. They gave up hope. So what you said. That's, that's straightforward, honestly. When people do show up and vote, they don't vote whether or not they have experience or whether they have the best experience. They vote on the person based on whether they're a man or a woman, whether they're white, white, Spanish, Chinese, whether they're straight or gay. That's what they vote on. And we've gotta change that culture. Because if we don't, what kind of precedent are we setting for our grandchildren? I just had a brand new grandbaby a week ago. What kind of precedent am I setting for my grandchild if I don't step out and try to change this?
David.
I, in my opinion, I feel like, um, I, I beg to differ. They say that, uh, uh, registered voters are not educated to vote. I do a register, registration drive almost every year. Uh, the board of election director, Miss Shula Proba, does an excellent job in publishing in the paper, making notifications. Um, when it's, uh, one stop and the election day. She does an excellent job. I served on the board of election for eleven years. Five of those was, um, chairperson. And I think they do an excellent job in letting the community know when it's time to vote. I think if people, Ahoski is a different breed of folk. I've been here all my life. And they just do things different. They do things the way they wanna do and they will not support you. I ran for mayor eleven years ago. I lost by sixty-nine votes. After that, I was thinking of folks for supporting me. And I had a lot of folks to tell me, my time is up.
Let me finish that.
I'm very much.
Please.
And, and, and the response was, um, I was sitting there, people were saying, well, I said, thanks for voting for me. They said, well, I didn't vote for you. I said, well, why? It's because you didn't ask me to vote for you. And now we have campaigned and I knock on doors. And that's what I do. I knock and make myself available to people because I'm a people person. And it seems to work for me. But again, Ahoski is a different breed of people. This has been well advertised. Thank you, Mr. Riddick. And you see the attendance. I'm on Facebook every day. And I've shot about three hundred friends. And people are, I'm gonna come, I'm gonna be there. And look, Ms. Wynn, she didn't see it for, for years. It just don't turn out. That's a portrait.
Yeah. So I've clarified what I said.
What, what are you gonna clarify?
The seventy-five percent that are lazy, just don't care or gave up hope.
I mean, there's no thing.
What I mean by that is, when I'm out there talking to people about voting. You'll get, out of the town of five, roughly five thousand three hundred, two hundred forty-four people. We have an average of about five, six hundred people that showed up to vote. Maybe eight hundred during presidential election. Maybe a couple hundred more than that on executive leadership. And one of the reasons, basically, when they, when you ask them, well, did you show up and vote? Well, no, I, I didn't quite make it. I had this I had to go do, or I had this I had to go do. And I think, well, it was fifty-five seconds to swing by the voting booth. It took a while to get, took five, five, maybe five minutes to get it taken care of. And when you find out the real reason why they didn't show up, well, I went fishing, or I was at the store Walmart, or I went, were able to do something. And, and these are excuses you start filing in here after you, you get the original excuse. And that's what I'm saying. We've got to change the culture of that. We've got to start telling people, it is important that they, I served my country as did, as did those too. You know, to make sure that every person has that right to vote. And to guarantee it. And too many people squander it.
Let's, let's close out with this. You got one minute coming this way for your closing statements.
They're not gonna ask questions?
They, they are after your one minute closing statement. Yeah, you close out, then we're gonna go to the audience. But one minute closing statement.
Alright, um, um, I ain't gonna say, I wasn't gonna say, but, um, you know, we done talked about a lot of different issues today. And, you know, we have told y'all where we stand on certain areas. But the one thing I wanna horn on and I wanna focus on is as councilman, I will represent the citizens. I will be that voice that will fight for the citizens at all. Now, we just talking about why citizens don't vote. I'm telling y'all, I'm out there in the streets with them. I talk to them on a daily basis. They don't have hope. They don't have hope that anybody that get in office is gonna be able to do anything to help you. Because once they have voted, and this, we understand, this is a generational thing here. So I'm here to restore the hope. I'm here to represent the people, all the citizens of Ahoski. I will represent y'all. I'm gonna fight for y'all. And we got some tough roads ahead. I'm gonna be honest. We have some tough roads ahead, but with me, I will be straightforward. I'm not gonna lie to you. I'm not gonna beat around the bush. I'm gonna tell you the way it is. And we gonna work together to get out of this economic crisis. Cause what I see, with y'all, y'all give me hope. To know that it's still some of us that care about the political process and care about the elected officials that are gonna serve them. So I just want to tell y'all, my name's Stuart Fields, and, um, remember to vote to restore hope.
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I do not plan on being a career politician. I've never been a politician. I've never held office. Um, but I want to be in office to represent the citizens. I'm in the trenches with you guys. I am suffering through the same stuff, the water bills, the getting shut off with the sixty-five dollar, um, double jeopardy, um, fifth day added fee for the water bills. The girls are going to school and they're not getting, you know, the education they're supposed to be getting. Um, roads are horrible, everything. I'm in there. I'm not, you know, in the suburbs, suffering watching Ahoski citizens struggle. And I'm just, you know, with my own agenda. I don't have an agenda. I don't have any businesses that are going to benefit from me being a councilwoman. I just want to represent the citizens a hundred percent. That's it.
I'm Donald Kirkland. As you know, I run for the Ahoski County Council at large. Most everyone knows, over the years that I've dealt with the council, been out the streets, getting things done. The one issue we've had in this town is we constantly elect people to that ci- to that city council who've never been to meetings and they have no real idea what the issues are, except for what they may read in the newspaper once in a while. Then when they file for office and then they really don't have a grasp on the budgets and, and whatnot, and how, how actually the town runs. I'm different in that aspect, cause I've been, I've been dealing with this council for eight years as a citizen. It was myself that got Main Street repaid, cause the council wouldn't do it. I got Miracle Farm Main Street cleaned, cause the council wouldn't do it. I got the gr- uh, grass out there on the overpass cut, council wouldn't do it. I'm now working with DRT, trying to get that redone a couple of years early. Waiting on Raleigh on that. Um, I've been in different businesses, trying to get businesses to locate here. Um, I'm involved in different, uh, county meetings and, and other meetings throughout the town with different elected officials. Um, these are things that I can bring to the table, which comes with eight years of experience as a citizen. And I've gotten done, just imagine what I can do for you, as an elected councilman.
Again, my name is David Roberson, and I'm seeking the office, uh, city council at large. I feel like I'm the best candidate for the job. I will not make any promises that I can't fulfill. But I will, when elected, I will do my very best and join forces with councilmen that's already seated. Make sure that we can make some changes here in Ahoski. Our senior citizens are hurting with the expensive utilities, our water bill, sewer, and garbage bill. The best part, they can major me, but I'm going out and knocking on doors. We need help. We got grandmothers that only get five hundred dollars a month in income. If they're paying eighty-nine dollars a month for water bill, you gotta pick and choose. Whether I'm gonna buy my medication, whether I'm gonna keep my water on, or the food. It's something to think about. And we have guys sitting on the city councils. It doesn't matter to them. Because most of them that's sitting up there, someone else is paying their utilities for them. So these things have to change. The potholes in the street has to change. My car is in a shop right now. Twenty-five hundred dollars for my air bags was burst on Hayes Street. And I talked to the city council manager about that the other day. Something has to be done. Lighting, new programs. So much to be done. But I cannot sit here and tell you that I'm gonna do it all, because I need your support. If I'm elected, I've gotta have your support. You need to come to the city council meetings and voice your opinion to help get things changed here in Ahoski. Appreciate your vote on November the seventh. I may not know how to do it, but I know how to get it done. Thank you.
Okay, great. This concludes the first half. Next half is gonna be questions from the audience. Let's take a seven minute recess, use the bathroom, whatever you need to do. We'll come back and we'll open it up for audience questions.
How did you get all these things done and the council couldn't get them done?
I got, I got on my backside, went out, talked folks, walked street, got to know folks, got to know businesses, went to the different state agencies, got to know them. Those are rapport with them over the years. And was able to start getting, gain my trust, and, and I gained there, where we started getting things done. Um, they knew the needs of the town, and I was able to present it in a fashion that when they have to get something done. I'll give an example of Main Street. I presented, I presentation the state, the town for, uh, six years getting Main Street repaid, but it was getting dangerous. You couldn't ride your car down, it wouldn't throw your front of your car.
I know, I know, but I didn't have a way. Could you do it and then cancel them with them?
Because I couldn't cut the council too basic. They said the state didn't paint the road, maybe you could do it, even though they destroyed it by cutting it up.
And it is.
So when I went to talk to the state, to the DRT, uh, engineers, they said it wasn't due to be repaid till the end of two thousand and eighteen. And after I presented my argument to them, he said, well, I tell you what, we may have some money at the end of the budget year. If we can, we'll get out there and get it done for you. The spring of twenty sixteen, they were out there paying the Main Street for us. And that's just a sample of some of the things I've been able to get done.
I used to wonder how that you can get all this done in town. That's okay, dude. That's, that's great.
Talking to people and getting, getting to know them. And I've got, oh, I've got eight years of, of dealing with different agencies of getting my name out there and then seeing what I've been doing, um, that, that has helped me build that before of trying to get something done.
Were you helping them?
How do you get the people?
Were, were you helping the townspeople?
No, the people that were paving and so forth.
No, I used to do that kind of work. But no, I went to DRT themselves.
So the, the town will allow, the town will allow people to come in with outside and contractual agreements, waived liability, and let them do work?
They don't have to sign a contract with regards to Main Street, cause that's a state-owned road.
A state-owned road. So the town is not responsible for Main Street?
Not responsible for Main Street.
So that's why they didn't pay it? Is that why?
They are responsible for that.
Okay, well, so many things that you said you can get done that the town council can't get.
Right. And, and that's all communication. I've been able to communicate with people as a citizen. I tell them all the time, I'm a citizen. And they were to get things done, and they're gonna accept it.
There, there's a, a few from the lady, I'm not gonna hand up.
My name is Cheryl Holland. And my question is, if this town has got in twenty-one million dollars worth of debt, somebody's covered something up. So as a, uh, a person, or you all coming into this town, you can cut down a tree, but if you don't dig up the root, then it's going to con- continue to be a problem. Nobody has informed us, the citizens of Ahoski, that we were even getting in this kind of thing. What would you do different to inform people? Cause you're saying we're lazy. Um, when people are not, I'm not saying you, but you're saying, you're throwing out the word lazy. But when I'm not educated and I don't know that these things are going up, because town council meetings are held at ten o'clock on Tuesday morning. We're working for Canyon Hill. See, I can't, I can't take off from my job on ten o'clock on Tuesday morning to get to a town council meeting. So for me, what, um, I, I don't know.
Stuart.
What would you do different to bring the community back to hope? Because if people are not voting, it's because we have voted. And the people that we have voted for. And the people that we have voted for lied to us. And see us, you'll speak to me tonight, cause you won my vote in November. But you see me in December and turn your head like you don't even know who I am. So what, so yeah, people have got this wrong. People have seen that we can't trust politicians. What would you do different that will educate these, this community? And what's going on, and how we need to stand together to get changed there?
That's a good question, I like that question. Now, um, first off, I wanna tell you, I'm not a politician. I'm a regular citizen. So that's the difference. I don't look at myself as a politician. I see me and you, because we are both fighting the same fight. Now, secondly, we gotta deal with communication. We have to communicate with one another. We have to be able to let the citizens know what is going on, and we have to force it. See, like, I'm the, I go to people door to door anyway. I've been doing this before I even decided to run for office. I've already been out here in the streets, giving people food, helping the community. So what I'm telling you is, I'm the type of person that I'm gonna talk to you regardless, say hi. But we have to communicate, and we have to see about changing that town, cause you right. Cause on the next month, the meeting at ten in the morning, and then the following month is gonna switch to six in the afternoon. I mean, seven. But what we have to do is, we need to make it so it's more accessible to all citizens of the town. And see, the blue collar workers can't make it at ten o'clock in the morning. So that's how you can get backdoor stuff done. Now, you wanna talk about this twenty-one million dollars? Now, I haven't been running for office. So, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't constantly been running every election. So I don't know everything, but what I can tell you a little bit, how about I tell you a little bit? The old town manager, the reason we in the economic crisis that we in. And the elected officials, when, were presented with budgets, they didn't look at them. They didn't know how to read them. They, so whatever the town manager estimated that was coming in, he could've been a million off, two million off. But they just voting yay, 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 and not looking at it. So, that's how we get in this situation that we in. So, what I say is, for one, we need to have more than just town council meetings, we need to start having community meetings. We need to start allowing churches to start having meetings with the citizens. So we can start letting them know what's going on. It shouldn't be just a one meeting a month for the town. No, we need to have, so again, we gotta get more involved. Now, the town can have their one meeting, but still, we need to have multiple meetings, and we need to just be honest with the citizens. That's why I told you, with me, I'm a straight shooter. I'm gonna be honest. I'm just be honest, ain't, ain't, there's no other way. There ain't a big but to be honest, but that's how we gonna get things done. So, um, you know, and I agree, this, this budget is redu- it's ridiculous.
So Stuart, big building on our question, if you get elected, you brought a very valid point. You cut the tree, the root is still there. So let's say you get there, I mean, what, what do you do?
For one, as far as the budget.
Now, remember the numbers are against you.
Yeah, listen, as far as the budget reduction, right? Right now, we got some difficult times ahead, and I'm just gonna be honest. Because for us to get out of this economic crisis, tough decisions are gonna have to be made. Tough decisions are gonna have to be made, and as far as the root, the root is already gone. That was the town manager. The town manager was the root. Now, also, hold on, hold on, hold on, I will tell you this. Also, you got certain, how do I wanna say it? You got certain, certain people that are kinda like running things. And, you know, you gotta have candidates that's gonna fight for the people, I told you. You gotta have a candidate that is for the people, and that's, that's all I can say.
Let's follow up, hold on. She has a, you have a follow up? You said the root is not gone.
No, I don't believe that. I don't, I don't believe. See, for me, I'm a bookkeeper. And I, I'm paid, I work at Pickly Wiggly as a bookkeeper. I am paid to count Pick- Pickly Wiggly's money. And an auditor comes behind me, and then they're supposed to count every penny that I report. They're going through everything that I got. Right? On Monday, when I send in all my week's work, it's checked at the office. So if I'm gonna pin it off over on the grocery side, and I put a penny more, then I gotta take a penny away. You can't tell me that one town manager set up there and got twenty-one million dollars in debt as some, by himself.
No, no, no.
And I'm just saying, so, we get, he gone. So when you get another town manager in, the first thing you go cut is the children's, where, when you, when our children play sports, they have to pay forty-five dollars. I pay taxes, and anybody in this town that has a child, still have to pay forty-five dollars per child to even get that child to play, play softball. How many parents making seven dollars and thirty-five cents can pay for four children, forty-five dollars apiece? So what I'm just saying to you is, it's eas- I mean, I gotta see something different. First of all, the, 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 the ones there are not meeting with us. So we can't even ask some questions that you probably don't even know. But you gotta look at something and say, it's got to start somewhere else, some, somewhere. And it cannot be our children, because our, people won't bring businesses here when your, your school system is at the low end of the textbook. People won't come here when they don't even have a decent place to eat, other than a Chinese place and a hamburger place. So we've got to understand, it's gotta be something different done. And so when you look at this man, yeah, he was a town manager, but I don't believe that he did all this by himself. I believe somebody else has worked, got, wrote some checks. Yes, yeah, you're gonna hear this, yeah, yeah.
The issue started with the finance officers, who were blowing the town manager. They put numbers into the spreadsheet that were wrong. That went through the town finance, up to the town manager.
Kirkland, 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 what do you mean they put numbers in the spreadsheet?
When, when they're doing the numbers for your budgets every year, and they're, they're putting outlay, capital, inlay numbers, whether it's cash flows and capital out of town. All it takes is one number to be all in that spreadsheet, to throw the entire budget from place line to line.
Your, your budget, your budget is normally handled by an accounting firm, hold on. By an accounting firm, and then in addition to that, that accounting firm normally has, you know, city records. You don't go through that process again? You don't go through?
In Ahoski, we have it, uh, finance officer, the, the notice of the spreadsheet. That go to the fi- to the town manager. He, he fills his budget based on what the finance officer sent him. He does a fact check, anything I'm supposed to, which is what's been happening for years. Well, that gets sent to the, uh, town council, and they vote on it by June thirtieth, for the next fiscal year. They base that on the projections of what the auditor from the previous year who came in to audit the books. The problem we have is, for, for the forward decade, our auditor's always said, we were a million dollar positive zero plus, two million negative positive zero plus. Then all of a sudden, one year, boom, we're, we were, we started off with a million plus, now we're negative coin six thousand dollars, and still having to cut tens of thousands of dollars from the police, fire, other.
I don't know, real, I what you just said. You just said the finance officer was involved. You said the town manager was involved. You said the audit company was involved. You follow what I'm saying?
That system is that far off?
In my opinion, as a city councilman, I want an outside independent firm to come in and audit all the books back to find out.
If you like that, would you, would you support an outside independent firm coming in?
Yes, I would.
Would you support it, Katie? Would you support it, David? Do you think it's necessary? Okay, good. Real quick, two seconds.
This, this is the root of the problem, y'all. It was the town manager and our elected officials. Now, we don't want it to leave, but let me tell you, it was the elected officials that evoted on the town manager budgets that put us in this pri- in, in this crisis. They are the ones that voted yay, if they would've, because the elected officials are the town manager boss. So, that he come before the elected officials with this plan, and it was up to them to say yeah or no, but they said yeah. Because they didn't do their own work. The bottom line, they just looked at it and voted, and to be, now, listen. Oh, Mr. McDuff is now going to give the elected officials training on how to read budgets now. This is what he is implementing now. So that tells you that our elected officials don't know how to read budgets. They got in office, they got complacent, they was happy, and then, see, get in office, and that, that's the, just the beginning. Once you get in office, you gotta learn how to govern. So you gotta study what they give you and learn, they didn't do it, so they're just happy.
Listen, great, well, real quick, real, real quick. So, before we go any further, I'm gonna be adding on, but this gentleman had a question. Then it was Cherry, then it's you, then this gentleman in the audience.
My question, um, on economic, as a member of the board, as, uh, council, what could y'all do to help bring jobs or opportunities, bringing companies in without us? As a town, I have to pay a concern, um, a firm is a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, we were paying Buxley Group, but we're not paying them.
We were very outside company, right around, a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to tell us what we need in this town. As, as, as council, what, what, what plan do y'all have?
What's your name, Sergeant?
Mickey Outlaw.
Mr. Outlaw, are you addressing it to anybody in particular?
Yes, yes.
General, alright, so everybody can go for it, alright?
The simple thing is, one, you know, Buxley Group was giving us information that we were contracted, that town was contracting with. The problem with that was, we weren't getting a return on that investment. So, nothing canceled that contract. That was part of the economic development of a discussion we had yesterday at the Republican Commission. Um, the other is getting out there to draw businesses. One, we have to make our town attractive. Uh, businesses not gonna come into a town they see is so depressed that they don't think they're gonna make a profit on their dollars that they invest in that community. That's the bottom line of business, profit loss. Businesses don't look at it as a people issue anymore. Um, several things we can do town-wise to, to, to better our towns are different types of grants, block grants, that can build our towns up from infrastructure to roads, pipes, locks, which can then entice businesses to come here. But the problem with that is, in order to meet some of those grants, you have to have a median income level where the government say, okay, when you meet this median income level, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars per household. The problem is, Per- Perk County as a whole in Ahoski is economically challenged. The average household in Ahoski makes twenty-six thousand dollars a year. So when you got that money there, the state, the, the state and the federal government says, well, you don't meet such a USDA, you don't meet the median income level, so if you don't qualify for a lot of the grants that are out there, that's what that coalition now that they're trying to develop is gonna try to address. So if we can bring industries and also look at industrialized areas, that we can bring bigger industries in here paying a higher cost of jobs.
Yeah, one thing we can do is, listen, it's money in the town of Ahoski, but it's being blocked from being spent. So we need to allow, cause when we keep looking outside for the answer. And a lot of times, the answer is right here, but we just have the answer covered and won't let it out. So, you have people in Ahoski that, business owners, that I know personally, that have money, that's willing to invest. What person wanna bring a Captain D's right now? He's, he's trying to bring a Captain D's to the town of Ahoski right now, but he's catching, um, slack from certain people that won't allow him to bring it in here, and the council members are not voting to allow this to happen. So, what it is, is, you, I, I'm telling y'all, is education, for one, we gotta have the workforce able to perform the job, and also, we gotta stop letting certain people stop this money from coming in.
Stuart, would you be willing to host town hall meetings for the citizens of Ahoski on a quarterly basis?
Man, listen, we can do it monthly, look, right now, as my organization, we already have meetings every week that we have asked the citizens of Ahoski to come, where we at. Every Monday, from five to six, so we can discuss issues that's going on in the town. It's one-twenty Mitchell Street, Ahoski. That's our building, one-twenty Mitchell Street. No, now, now, listen, we have to get better about putting it out there, I will admit that. But we have been offering this meeting for at least three months now. Yeah, and, um, it may be even longer.
Let's keep moving. Katie, when we come right down, uh, keep coming, uh, straight down. Would you be open to hosting, uh, town hall meetings quarterly? Donald?
I do, but you have to keep within the law, uh, with regards to how council councils are organized. If you have three council members or five council members, that's a form. At that point, time you're gonna open session. Now, individual councilmen can get out there and run town hall. Down there, which I do that, if I get out there as citizens, I'll have a group of ten, twenty people around to help. Um, so it's, it's, it's going on anyway throughout the town. Problem is, our active council person don't do that.
It has to be done. These are extreme towns.
Now, we are doing community and community things, uh, that I've been, that I've been stacking on occasion, as well as county rules. Um, but, um, that's just a stem of the seed.
David, and we're going to Cherry, then we're going to this young lady, then we're going to this gentleman in the back, and then we're going to this Soria guy, then we're coming back to you. I got it. Would you, good show. Would you be open to hosting town hall meetings just to keep the citizens informed, in terms of what's happening? Okay, great. So, Mr. Cherry?
My question to anyone, um, what, if you was elected, what sign would it make to bring a water park here that's gonna only last possibly three months out of a year? And would you be willing to face Mr. Gatlin? The one that's raising the water bill, that's why they're raising the water bill now, so that that can pay for the water park when they come. If, what would you do differently to counteract that?
Uh, I'm gonna tell you. Now, me personally, um, I don't know if we can go about reversing what has already been done. Because we have already received the money, and it's already built. And it's already back there, it's just, and I agree, it's seasonal. So you're not, and I think they was talking about charging. Uh, so you're not gonna make that much money off of it, because it's seasonal. Alright, it's seasonal, so, to be honest now, there was something that I think that we could've avoided. Now, but moving forward, as far as closing it down, I don't see that happening. But what I can see is, is that as far as the recreation center being back in full force, that's something that I think that we can work on with, like you said, we might have to go outside the box. We might have to start asking other members of the community to help us out as far as getting that back, but, um, the, the squirt part to me, I don't wanna say was a waste of money, but I just think it was bad judgment.
You, you can determine that, uh, to me, it's, it's a waste of money.
Now, I mean, it was bad judgment, and I think it should've been, it may've been a good idea in the beginning. That was before I think they realized we was in this economic crisis. And I think once they realized we was in the economic crisis, they should've fagged out of it, like, like they did with the library. Now, I don't know if y'all know about all the money that was raised for the library. It was, um, two hundred thousand dollars. That was raised by the library, and now, it's frozen. Now the town got the money and done spunked it, and now, what is going on with that money that the citizens donated?
David, what, um, you wanted to add on with that, to bring, bring the one, you wanted to, brother Cherry's question, you wanted to deal with that for the? The water park, you initially said you could deal with that.
The question was, if you was elected, the water bill is now in Ahoski, it's, it's sky high, and new. Could it be that it's high now, so when that started operating, they could pay for the water that's going there? What would you do to counteract, uh, uh, making a water park a reality?
And the water park is seasonal. I, I probably wouldn't, um, vote for the water park.
It's already there, but, um.
I, I guess if it's in, in place, then, um, I'm not sure.
I think I can do it.
I have, there's nothing we can do now, it's already in place. Um, it's not free, it's five dollars. Uh, I think it's ages twelve and up, and it's three dollars for the younger children. And you can get seasonal passes too for that. The thing is, um, there was an article, or I don't know if it was in the council minutes, that there was a survey sent out to the citizens of Ahoski, to see if this was something that we would be interested in. And like I said, whenever they talk about surveys and stuff, I never get these surveys. I've never gotten a survey, because that, out of all the things that we can possibly put money into, a, a sprinkler park is just not, it's just not, it's not reasonable. It's seasonal, it's not free, and the water bills are going up, so why, why, it, it makes absolutely no sense. It's seasonal, it's not free, and the water bills are going up, so why, why, it, it makes absolutely no sense.
Now, this is a issue with water bills in the park. The water bill is, is, has no relationship with the park. The park was a bad idea, I thought it gets it from day one. I thought it was a waste of money, and I've been preaching this council, we don't have the money for a lot of things we've been doing over the last couple of years. When they didn't listen, we're, we're all gonna grant, and that's just what it is. We have a water park, and it costs us two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and it'll cost more, 'cause they're not done with it, that's why it's not open. The water rates are determined by state, and a town has no control over the water rate. With regard to when they did the wastewater treatment facility plant, when they expanded it, the state said, in order for you to qualify for the grant, you have to raise your water rates. Now, when they raised the water rates, that enabled the town to qualify for the grant in order to pay for the wastewater treatment plants. What the town does have control over is the late fees and the reconnection fees. I even presented a plan to the manager on how to reduce the reconnection fee by changing the penalty. Keeping the same amount of money coming to the town and saving the average citizen twenty dollars overall if they have to have their water bill disconnected. Now, if you have something that where they don't have a penalty for paying, as, just like a driver's license, or you get kicked out of the road, eventually, you're gonna keep the people's safe process going over again. What that does, that eats into the town budget, if you have someone that goes and doesn't pay the water bill, but the water, but the town has the payment they have to make every annual. They don't have the money coming from the town, and the late water bill, or, or any other.
So you would move forward with the park, or would you not move forward?
No, I would have done the water park, um, based on the cost that they had, um, designated that park.
You would have not voted for it?
And what we, the product that we got. If they didn't do a better job of going around to different cities and seeing what kind of parks they had, and based that and the cost of debt construction for our town and for the size of the people and the number of children we have in our town.
I wanted to stick with this question.
But the other part to the question, uh, Mister Reddick, is, uh, you also said that you have done numerous of, you have gotten jobs done. But where's the proof to show, where's the paperwork and all that to show that all that's being taken care of?
Everything I've done is in the minutes of the meetings, whenever I address the council, letting them know what's been done, what I've gotten done. Or it's been printed, or it's been in the road, on return over the years, um, different things that, that's gone, that's, that's happened. Um, I've addressed the council numerous times, there are several members here that have been to council meetings where I've, up there, just by their meeting. Um, discussing what I've gotten done, what was done, what, what needed to be done, and where they were failing at. I've been stood in the council, and watched fourteen totally resign, because of the budget.
We're gonna move this young lady in the front, and then we're gonna have the gentleman in back to the orange, then the gentleman right in the book.
Okay, my name is Kim Castle, I'm from Rep. Paul, I work very, very hard in the community. And one of the things that we need to do is, elected official, is that we need to go into our communities, not only at the time of vote, but every day. We need to find out the needs of our community. You know, I mean, because we have families that, um, families with drugs, but they have babies. We got to, you know, help out, we got to try to educate, we got to bring out a lot of this. You know, I, I'm having, we've done a lot of things, okay, and also, I'm, I was also the president of African American Caucus in Harper County. And what we do is that we try to get Harper County residents that's in, that's involved, or want to be political leaders, as well as community act, uh, activists. And we try to get them there, and so that, you know, we can, you know, educate them on how to get elected. Because, and another thing, a lot of you don't knock doors, a lot of you, that's where, you don't even know your resident. Matter of fact, when you guys see people at the polls, if you looked at they, at their, uh, salary ballots, you saw the African American Caucus, they wanted, that was me. You know why? It's sad, because the people don't even know who you are. They don't even know you, they never saw your face, they never saw anything. Yeah, you want them to vote for you. For you to want people to vote for you, but yet, you don't even know what their concerns are. We need to know, we need to bridge, and people are not lazy, they're not, they're, they're not trustworthy, they figure that you're not trustworthy, but they vote. So that's why they stay home. So, uh, I, I'm very determined for what you said, Kurt. You know, and, and, you know, you and I have had conversations, but I'm gonna say this, don't knock doors, remember, go help people.
You're, you're not from Ahuski, so you don't see me out there. I am out there in the community, every day.
Can I respond? Just briefly, we got your, 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 your orange, and Mister Sawyer standing up, so we wanna, real quick, man.
Real quick, listen, uh, how many people that seen here today, how many people have doors have I been to? I can look at, I can be, I can be at least four or five people, that, 'cause I'm currently going door to door throughout the entire town. Throughout the entire town, I'm currently going door to door, and this ain't something I just started because I'm running for office. We already been doing this, when David Robertson was talking about the elders, we been feeding the elders, we been going giving them food. We been doing this since November of last year. So when it comes to being in the community, I'm a sprunt, I'm like, I'm liking the semen in the community, I'm so much out there.
Okay, great, uh, the gentleman in orange and Mister Sawyer, who's been standing up patiently.
Do you want to go?
Sawyer, Brother Sawyer, you wanna go first?
Yes, and you can go first.
Okay, okay, I'm Robert B. Sawyer, and I, I was listening, I, I enjoyed it, all of it. So I wanna know, you saying that you are so much in debt, that, uh, the money you get for the physical year gonna be paying the debt back, so it won't do us, it won't do nobody, right? That's what you're saying?
No, sir, what?
Are you saying this?
The town's twenty-one million dollars in debt. As current annual payment to repay those loans, it's gonna run us just over thirty-one million to repay it. So it won't be paid until you're twenty-fifty-seven, most of us here won't be here then. The, the problem, that's not incurring any more debt. Now, it can get paid down, but we're gonna have to sacrifice. I mean, you, whenever you take away a tax dollar, you're taking away something that can be served in the community. We as, we as a town, used to go around, help our neighbors, we used to get out there and get the trash up in the street, and we used to keep the grass cut out, out the yard, out, out the streets, out the gutter. We used to cut our neighbor's grass, they didn't have lawn mowers. We got there, we did things, we watched the neighborhood, we made sure businesses didn't get broken into. The problem is, we've gotten so used to the town doing every single thing for us, that we've got to have to do it ourselves. But now, we're gonna have to get back to doing things for ourselves again, because the town just can't afford to do it, because of the council not doing proper budget turnover site. The town manager messing up the budget, and the finance officer messing up the budget, it's a systemic problem that's been going on for years.
Let me figure that, let me figure that. The bottom line, the bottom line is, our elected officials should go to jail.
That's right.
That's the bottom line, 'cause now, we the citizens have to fix and pay for their mistakes. Now, let me tell you something, another thing, where every, when there, whenever there's a problem, there's a solution. So we twenty-one million in debt, well, what we need to do is find ways to raise more revenue. So how you get more revenue is, we have to get more money floating in the community to help with this debt. So how we gonna do it is, we gonna get new businesses to come in here, that's what we gonna have to do, we gotta get more business, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest, people don't wanna hear taxes, but listen, if we wanna be serious about reducing this debt, so it do not cripple our children, and some of y'all grandchildren, we might have to raise taxes. And I, and I'm not the one that believe in raising taxes, but at this juncture, where we at, I know we don't wanna hear it, I don't wanna say it, but I'm, I'm honest, and all I can do is be honest.
I think you have a second point to add?
Uh, yeah, I would say, uh, you said, you know, people will invest, well, so, you know, they talk about the budget, 'cause you ain't got no money. If you got people to invest, what about, uh, Robert L. Van School, we got this many units they got over here, they got about forty-six to fifty units, that is turning out a half million dollars a year. Why can't Robert L. Van School do that? You looking at, you looking at, that, that, this background? Why teach an investor to go there and turn it into an Olympic park, and draw people all over the world, come to Ahuski, why can't you do that?
Facts.
Let's think big now, let's think big.
The background though, the background where they used to race the horses, that used to bring revenue in. Remember that, we need to bring that back, it's, it's things that we can do, but also, you gotta understand, we have economic boards that people are put on these committees that control what businesses come and come, and come and don't come. And again, it goes to electing new people who wanna tell them the old way of business is out the door.
Although, if it's not working, you got to try something else. This, this level is not working. Okay, you see what, uh, uh, they did in winter, they put two bridges there, four ladies drive, it goes out, four ladies drive, and I went fifty, uh, fifty-eight to Muckburg. That's supposed to attract businesses. Okay, you gotta think big now, people here are welfare people, old people, seventy-five years old, ain't gonna do me no good. I come from a rough time, we had gardens, we paid ourselves, but you guys not gonna do it, so, let's think big now. Go there, get, get people to invest, get housing so you can attract two or three thousand kids at one time. Turn that background into an Olympic stadium, you got the stadium there, you got Robert L. Van School there, forty, fifty units. Turn that, and that's gonna draw money. Once you get money here, you'll see Main Street, I write up again, those people have to rent Main Street, 'cause you can't afford to rent. I can't blame them, so it's not working, it's something, don't work, try something else, see what I'm saying? That's what you have to do, it's not working.
And I'm that big, trust and believe.
We have God grant, they have God grant, and they want to raise money, and some, some of the funds on the horse.
And I was reading about the, uh...
Hey, hey, guys, let's, let's control the floor.
The town, the town, we... Call a pastor of the church, and tell them what's going on, so they can tell their congregation. They get, they're supposed to want to tell you everything that's going on. Well, let's start a food bank, have enough food to support the people in Harper County, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand people. Let's start that, in case of a natural disaster happens, you can take care of people. In Puerto Rico, they show you, them people, they, they won't prepare. Now they get a nurse, or somebody give them some bread. Put, they didn't play for us, so if anything happen here, call, always, if you take Second Timothy, Third chapter, say, current's time, that's what we're gonna do right now. Current's time, everything is happening, it's structured, it's just on time. You can't change it, because it's gonna happen. Matthew twenty-fourteen, the whole nine yards, what's happening, that's why, but it's my manuscript, so let's get in line with things, 'cause, uh, this is not working for us. We got all that resources in Ahuski, and nobody using it. I, I go by Robert L. Van School, this place over here, it's turning out a half million dollars a year. Half a billion dollars a year, Ahuski High School, Robert L. Van, poor thing is going, got, got fifty units there. You can turn that background into an Olympic park and draw people from all over the world, come here, hotel, two thousand people supporting it, Ahuski gonna bloom.
Katie, you can chime in, and then we're going to the gentleman in orange shirt.
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, Ahuski is very divided, very, very, very divided. You mentioned churches, when the rec center closed down, that Monday, we were there, our organization was there. A handful of people were there, everybody.
I was there.
Huh?
I was there.
It was a handful of people, there was, and it was announced, it was on Facebook, it shut down, not one pastor was there.
I'm a pastor, sister.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, I don't mean to offend you, I'm so sorry.
No, no, you're fine, you, you don't matter.
But, we were there, we were there, that entire week, that they were volunteering. We were there, and we were posting on Facebook, you know, they need help, they have nobody here helping with the kids. They have to provide their own snacks, their own drinks, their own, everything, we were on Facebook. The churches weren't really helping, and they knew, because we're so divided, we can't come together as a community and help for just one cause, and this was a really important cause. It was for the kids, and there was nobody there. I mean, people were getting hosed out with me on Facebook, because I kept saying, this is absolutely ridiculous, that the churches are not helping the rec centers. And I took advantage of it, but guess what, I woke them up, and they went over there with snacks and water, and they saw all these kids, and they, they decided it was a mission that they wanted to part of, but...
Katie, this is a great point, you, you're really chiming in on what the lady, young lady in the back was saying, that the citizens have lost trust, not just in the politicians, but the clerics. Uh, orange shirt, gentlemen, you have.
First of all, I'm not gonna give you a sermon, but I want to thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank, no, thank you, 'cause if it wasn't for you setting it up, I'd be somewhere else tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Right. I'm David Ray, Brother David Ray, I'm a pastor.
I wanna hear you preach, man, go ahead.
But, first of all, all three of my children are biracial, so I don't have a hangup with this black thing, white thing. But there is a major problem in the town of Ahuski with the white folks versus the black folks.
Facts.
Okay, there is division in this town, and preachers are leading it. And preachers are leading it.
You're right, they only concerned about themselves.
And one, God did not call me to be, I was asked, I moved back just, I was born and raised, I'm a Ahuski cougar when we played football right on the line. I was born and raised, I love Ahuski, and I love you, and don't even know you, but I love Ahuski. But, when you want to see where all this twenty-one million dollars went, go down Martin Luther King Road, that used to be old Route Street. This street I live on, and look at one block of the city as a fire department we didn't need. We didn't need it, if you want to know where our money went, just go stand right there and look at that, it ain't helping me none. And I'm across the street from that, that, uh, magnificent, biggest fire department for five thousand folks out on the, because the inside people, and a lot of them are not on the town council. Run this town, and they're not on the town.
Facts. Facts.
Well, most folks don't know, because there's some dog rolling. I, on the street I live, I've been back now a year and a half, I was gone fifteen, ten years, I came back and cried. I honestly cried, and I saw in my yard, right across from town council meeting, there was this junk in this land, where they, where the man that had sold the land to the fire department, he was allowed to leave tires, blocks, and everything else out there. From here to that car out there, way out here, just, long way out here, just junk, right there, across the street from the town council. I asked one that should have been here tonight, that's not here, he's in a revival somewhere. Did he ever see it?
I wonder who that is?
And you know what he told me? He never knew nothing about it, it was across the street from the town council. They're not paying attention, on the street I live, every time it rains, folks, the adultery man that lives on the corner of that house, the third house for mine, that, the water is up to his knees, that's how bad the drainage is down there. They have to get on their car to get into the driveway unless they want to get wet. It's like that one block from where the town council meets. All right, no, they don't, because they do not care. And I, I'm gonna get to, I'm, sir, all right, then, you look, with twenty-one million dollars in debt, folks, it's going to get worse. I'm sorry to report to you, it's gonna go higher, you think it's gonna get fixed, it's not, it's going to get higher. I almost like the idea of just bankrupts and let the state come in here and take all this next, 'cause it's gone too far. If you have a million dollars you donated, you have a million, you a million, no, I can't even hardly, my water bill is seventy-eight dollars, and I am by myself, okay? Right, I've seen you before, God bless you, you can see me, seventy-eight dollars, all right, and then my city and county taxes is nine-hundred and three dollars on my heist that I have to deed to. I am not in favor of raising taxes, because I cannot afford no more, no more. I will vote against you talk about raising taxes. I'd rather the town go bankrupt, I'd rather the town go bankrupt, turn it over to the state, to the federal government, then you raise my taxes, 'cause you can't fix it, and I can't fix it either. It's gone too far, it's gone too far, and those people turn... It's gone too far and those people tonight that are on town council, if I was in it, but God called me to preach, he called me to town council.
That's right.
'Cause folks wanted me to do it, buddy, and I could do a great job.
That's right.
But God didn't call me to do that. But what I'm saying, where are they at tonight? They're not here because you know what they look at this as? This is a joke, what's going on tonight, that's why tonight, this is a joke, you're a joke, I'm being honest with you, buddy.
That's right.
I'm telling you, true, this is a joke.
A joke to them.
Because we're gonna get reelected anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we got this covered.
That's right.
Yeah.
I went over there to that rec center and I'm not, and I'm not damning you, sir, but I'm letting you know what I know to be the truth, I live here.
I'm gonna take it like that.
Right. I like you. Uh, that rec, that rec that afternoon, I went over there, I spoke up and said, we're all preachers. We're all the preachers and I know why one of them was there and bless his heart, it was a political move, along with the town manager inviting him. And I don't mean to be ugly, but the truth hurts, folks.
Yeah.
The truth hurts, and I said, yeah, and and the response to me was, because they don't have any children involved in it, the preachers don't have childrens in it, that's why they're not here, and I said, they've got families in their churches that children. The sum of the, the sum of the, the sum of the, I'm, the sum of the, folks, number one, you may as well face it, they can't solve it, it's going to get worse.
Yes.
But I will have to say, I will have to say, sister, what's your last name? Ms. White, you're gonna get stopped, I try, or you don't wanna run it because no one is staying with, and you three are running for one seat, right? Bless y'all's followers, three of you, I like all four of them, but you're gonna have to get out there in the community and you're gonna have to get out there and you're gonna have to go into some churches and you're gonna have to speak up. Because if you don't get out there and they see your face, he's got an easy victory, that's why he's not here tonight.
Yeah.
Because he's already summed you up.
Look at this right here.
I don't have it when he has.
Want to see a question?
Yes.
Get to your question.
And I probably, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but with twenty-one million dollars in debt, be honest with me, be honest with me, buddy, and you can offer answer, what are you thinking to get us off twenty-one million dollars?
Robert Van.
We'll go right down. Thank you for your passion, sir.
Beyond.
Our work is cut out for us, you know, it's a lot to be done and I don't know what I can do, but like it is office.
'Cause the damage has already been done and it's a mess, 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 and citizens, enough citizens have not come out and put their feet to the fire and did it. And that's it.
Let's go down, we got you next.
It's not a simple fix and it's not something gonna get fixed overnight. Um, and there is not one particular answer to the, to the whole problem. The biggest thing we can do is increase revenue through new businesses coming into town. But again, to do that, you got to make try to count track, and that starts with us as citizens of the one, but new leaders as well. My opinion's always been the entire council needs to go, they already been, and I stand by my statement today as I did March fourteenth. Um, again, it's, it's, it's a hypothetical question that's left to be done five years from now. Most people are looking for a quick fix today and the situation we're in right now, there is no quick fix. We're in it for the long haul, if we want to be a viable pastor, and it's gonna take the community coming together with their ideas, 'cause just one person on that council can't get nothing done. It takes three to get anything done on that council. But it takes the community to be involved, to inform that council what they want done, it's not what the council wants done, it's what the community wants done. And that's something our council has forgotten about, or just didn't really care, in my opinion, and that's where it goes. With regards to the debris that uh, brother David was talking about, he, I spoke to him about that debris and within a matter of days, I had that stuff cleaned up, where the town council would, would do nothing. And only know, they knew that that debris was there.
Ten years.
Yeah, ten years, they knew it was there and it took me a matter of days to have it cleaned up.
Katie, which one? Um, honestly, I, I, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. It's gonna get worse before it gets better, all we can do is, you know, try to bring in revenue with the businesses, but um, like you said, I'm, I'm not completely against bankruptcy because if we don't, if, if we don't completely change the council, it's, it's just gonna be the same thing. If one of us gets into council and they go and it's just one of us saying nay all the time, that's not gonna work either. And it takes, it takes the community as well, if you go to the meetings, and I know that the schedules are off, but if you go to the meeting and voice your opinions and concerns and petition and go every single time, go to the office, make the phone calls, it has an effect, it's not gonna be overnight, but it does have an effect when they see that the community is behind the council members.
Katie, how many people would you say was at the last council meeting?
There was, there was quite a few, there was a lot of people.
More than fifteen?
There was, yeah, but it wasn't a good representation of the community.
Yeah, that's right, but more than fifteen, so what do you have?
Um, you know, I'm a solution oriented person, so when I hear twenty-one million dollars, it seem dire, but with me, wherever problem, there's a solution. And now, can I tell y'all right now what the solution is? I'll be lying, but I believe that there is a solution and I believe the solution is within the community. So it's just a matter of time, how we gonna do this now? We say that one council member can't get it done, so you know we have elections every year. So what we gonna have to do is we gonna have to start playing strategical politics. How we get strategical people in office in certain positions so we can have majority. And when you have like-minded people with majority rule, you can get things done. Now, does that route, I'm, I can't say. Now, we need to increase revenue, we know we need to increase revenue, that's automatically, we may need to reach out to um, to business owners to see if they can put their heads together to help us, but I don't think we need to go outside, I think the answer is right here within the community and I think the answer is right here within the citizens of the town, it's just a matter of us putting our hands together and getting serious. But believe it or not, when you get serious, you find answers, but as long as everybody is like a day, it's, it's gonna stay like this.
Gentlemen, I have a question, I just gotta quick add, one of the first things you should request or demand when you get elected is an outside company doing a complete audit. It has to be done because there's some suspicions about the twenty-one million dollars, I don't know if you guys are familiar with what happened in Edington some years ago, nineteen million dollars went missing. Right. So these things have to be challenged, you guys.
Uh, I don't live in a, I live in a. I was told police officer to be in there. I had a son get killed that year. And I was part of that, uh, late night. Uh, I had two nurses, very few nurses, another nurse in CPR and the central needs medicine staff.
Okay.
And they told them no judgments, so we got, we got no judgments. He rolled him over, he dead. I got there at three fifteen. It's like, it's like we had a pop glass soda.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't cover him up. Somebody from the house had a little blanket coming to cover him up. I stayed there for three o'clock to seven thirty, thirty minutes. I ain't seen you chief police yet, but he told me he was there. I said, uh, why didn't you respond to your? It ain't your, I said, I must have told you he was there, if he was there, he saw it, it was probably when he came up, shooting between four hours. Only trip, uh, person gained it for my son was when he came, pretty body. In the corner, I was at the high school. He didn't get there till four, seven in the morning, he was at the high school all night. It was four, seven next morning is what he got. And it's, it's a whole lot of stuff that.
Have you filed a fight with US Attorney General's office?
I don't know about.
Uh, US Attorney General's office in North Carolina, and you've also got one on the federal level with regards to that, that brings you everything from different laws and whatnot with how they treat uh, uh, the police life, as to uh, how they allow uh, rescue personnel for those who are certified rescue uh, operators to create them um, to write down like it says, or even civil rights violation, that's what you might wanna talk to, and US Attorney General's office in Washington DC or one in North Carolina. Is there an attorney in the house? Is that attorney in the house?
Okay.
A civil attorney also would be able to talk to you too.
There's certain lawyers, um, there's certain lawyers that you can talk to about this. Well, um, there's certain lawyers that you can talk to about the situation, but. Okay, but what it is, is that's a matter of policy and with the police force, you gotta deal with, with who is in charge. And that's the sheriff.
No, this is the.
The county, what I'm talking about.
And in the city.
In the city limits, so okay, so then, so so now that falls on the town council members, again.
The city, I know the county's chief, chief police.
Chief police.
It is chief police, but. But the sheriff is, listen, the sheriff is the top, the sheriff of Hurford County is the top police officer in this county.
No, who's wrong.
Then that's why now.
Well, whoever.
Now it's Dexter.
I'm telling you, but it, it, listen, the top sheriff, the sheriff is the top cop in the county. So, but what I'm telling you is that's a matter of policy and it goes to the elected officials because they are, how, how I wanna say, the chief of police boss. So it goes back to the people that's in office, again.
Right.
That's sitting there and ain't speaking up. Now, did you go to the town council about this, did you bring it to them? I remember, I remember vividly what happened, I'm saying, but did you ever come to the town council?
No, I, I don't, I don't know who to go to, I'll be trying to find answers, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, oh, now, it was covered and I'm trying to remember if, I remember, I remember vividly what happened, but um, wow, we need to talk, but um, there's people that you can talk to that can lead you in the right direction as far as what's going on. And that's a civil rights violation, there's a lot of violations that was done with that, uh, whole situation.
I think you got four people right here to start that are gonna agree to help you all that they can.
Yeah.
Um, did you have?
If you look at Juan Bone, I lost, it was in the census, I lost.
Oh, wow.
I lost one in two thousand and three.
Mm-hmm.
And Juan Bone told me, from a person that killed, he backed him on blue for the road. He was going to be his wife and that, so he came on one, be his wife and that, so he wasn't going on anything, but then I told him, I like, he say, well, it was, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Nobody seemed to care, does anybody have another question, or is there another question? Ms. Chamberlain, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I found out, since I've been living in a Husky since two thousand and one, which I have spoke to the, the ex-town ma- uh, manager about it and I've talked to the supervisor about it. Over out there, I found that different areas, different rooms for them. It's, it's, if you're, like, live in a hospital, that area, uh, either behind a hospital or in the past, uh, either colonial acre, you come first.
That's it.
Your phones over there come first, people over there come first, 'cause they have been, the workers are careful there. The workers have been in the other area and someone called about someone behind the hospital that needed to be done, or over in the past, uh, over at colonial acre, they stopped, you don't take that there.
Is that right?
Yes, and I have talked to the ex-town manager about it and I have talked to the supervisor about it, I said, look, we paying the same amount of money on a dollar for our taxes as they are.
Is this down the racial lines that the pastor was talking about?
Yep.
Yeah.
I read it, I read it. What, what he telling you is absolutely true. I was out here, I had a crew guy, I worked for, I used to work for Dominion. We was out on journey to Swamp Road, he took, go down a ways and turned by Prophet Store. I was in that commuter doing a storm, putting up uh, putting up a line, had a guy at the pole, pulling up the primary wire, right? Gonna put twenty-five people lights back on, all I needed was fifteen minutes to get it done. Now, what I was telling you, drop the wire and go behind the hospital and put on four people lights. No offense, there were four white people, out here on Prophet Store Road, it dealt with blacks and whites, but they weren't important enough, so we had to drop it and go around, so she was asking a little bit. And then, I wanna add something else. What Stuart was saying about, you had somebody that wanted to go in business, several years ago, at the Husky Inn, they had a town meeting. Uh, Jamie Johnson was there, a lot of business people was there, and Mrs. Linda Blackburn was there, she headed the meeting up. They had hired people to come in and do surveys and take, to see what it took, would take to bring a, uh, take a Husky forward, new business and stuff. The manager, the owner of the Husky Inn stated that he had his own money, was willing to put up his own money, his own building, which was the Husky Inn, to bring in an alibi, he was not able to bring it in, and he wasn't gonna put up all the money. So what, what you have is what he's saying.
So six of y'all were blocked.
I don't know who blocked it.
Ethnics, ethnics, I'm really, I know, I know the value of it.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right. And that meeting, that meeting, that meeting took, took place, that was, what, about five, ten years ago?
Yeah, I told that, yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I got one.
Uh, yes, sir, did I?
How you doing, my name is Michael Robinson, I'm not from a Husky, I'm from Carrattuck County, I'm one of the founding members of the troop and I'm here in support of you all. One thing I'm not hearing in the city, the people that are running talk about is, and y'all mentioned it voting, we need a, a state plan on voting. Um, like, uh, when you, when you register to get a license, to drive, that should automatically make you eligible to vote.
It is, that's what it is now.
It is now?
Yeah.
Well, we need to take, that needs to be something that you all need, whoever runs, needs to make sure that the citizens know that. Because we don't, like the lady said, the sister said earlier, we don't have a, and we, we're not involved, we don't feel like we're welcome in the voting process at all. Our young people totally walked away from it like they walking away from school, education. They dropping out of school like flies 'cause they don't see what that's gonna do to help them later on in life. So one of the things that we need to do statewide, because that's where one of the problems are with voting, it's not in the local area, but the local people need to go after the state and get them involved and changing the rules and make it easier, how about a whole week to vote?
We have that.
We have that, we have really.
No, I'm talking about just period, this, the, the, the polls open for a whole week. All the, all the, all the precincts open, just make it easy on people to vote.
That's a big expense to them.
That's all right, go to a kiosk and swipe your key on your, on your driver's license or something, automatically put your vote in, make it easier. What they're doing is confusing people with voting. They come up with pamphlets saying votes on the seventh and it's on the sixth, or it's on Friday and it's on Saturday. And we don't talk to each other's families anymore, so a lot of times we confused. It's not a, it's not that we lazy, I hate that word, that's a word you need to change and take it right out of your vernacular. We not lazy, we built this country. From the ground up, so we not lazy, we just disenchanted right now. We walking away because we disenchanted, so it's not lazy, I don't like that word. Yeah, please do, change it.
Yeah, let, let, let her respond, uh, then we go to her, we come back to you.
What I'm trying to explain was, people get out there and they complain, they argue, they fuss about what's not going on, what's not getting done right. When it comes time for them to get to the polls, they come up with every excuse in the book for not being at the polls. Now, what I'm saying about as far as lazy, I'm not talking about as far as being physically or mentally lazy, I'm talking about as far as being voting lazy. Whether it's your local races, your state lazy.
Yeah, but there's a reason for that.
Right, really?
There's a, there's a, there's an overarching state reason for why people are disenchanted in the voting process.
Yeah, because they don't want to vote.
No, well, not only that, they don't see their vote making a difference, we gotta make it make a difference. No, well, not only that, they don't see their vote making a difference. We gotta make it make a difference.
But that changes the community saying, we're fed up with it. And we're not tolerated no more and start getting up on your feet, on, on your feet to start.
We made voting hard in this state.
But every day, I'm in the council asking people, when I ask them to talk to the vote, I say, are you registered to vote? No. Go vote. Go register. Vote. Do you come to town council meetings? No. And they, they, they'll come with complaints. I said, go to your council meetings. I said, don't rely on someone else to relay your words to the council for you. Get up and say it yourself.
Sister.
I, I just wanna say that I just, I'm, 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 I, I've been just, it, it's the, all that you're saying is, is way off. I think, for my, my thing, this is just me. You got too many acts. I did this, I did this, I did this, I did this. It's gotta be a whole. If you're gonna work with people, it's gotta be all of them. The whole, the whole thing. And if our town is letting you do all of this, now, um, again, I'm gonna go back and say you gonna have to dig a root because something is wrong in this county. And, again, when you close a wreck department, the guy that's going out here now, that's volunteering all his time so that the children will have somewhere to go. And his name is Smith. It's the same pe- man that was working for the town of a husky. And because they found out that he had a back water bill from years ago, they fired him. And now they need it because he is the one that's running our wreck department. And the second thing I wanna say, if sixty-six percent of this state, this town is blacks, the biggest moneymaker you got in here is the church. And y'all keep on tiding if you want to. And keep on paying y'all when you don't have no money. And you don't have no mouth. I'm gonna go to all that. If you want me to, you want, the church is looking for the town to do what only the church can do. The town is not educating our children. That's the church's responsibility. You say, I love to send me fit. So, when I'm looking at all y'all, seven, eight, I, 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 I've seen enough. I'm going on home. They said eight o'clock, I'm going on. I don't work all day. But you all have to really assess this thing. Do you really wanna take on the fight? Because if I've got to pay more taxes, I paid two thousand dollars worth of taxes to live in perfect, uh, a husky. I paid two thousand dollars worth of taxes and over a hundred and some dollars in my water bill. And you gonna tell me, you gonna raise me? Not the, no, no, no. I, I'm telling you, I'm, that's not the question. So, you got to go back, rev- revamp. We've got to revamp. And we've gotta start small. And I just wanna say to you, I wanted to say to you when I was doing the meeting, thank you for this. What has happened is, when you talk a lot, you're called, you're called a troublemaker. So, what you've done, you've silenced the people in this community. And when, when they come back and realize they got a boss, and use it for the right reason, we're gonna see this town go to a better place. It's not gonna go one minute before.
Ms. Chamberlain, real quick, I'm gonna come back to you.
Thank you for coming, man. Appreciate you for coming.
I'm sorry.
Actually, he came up on our board with frustration and frustration. Or some, some had, all of those that have been done years ago. She said to me, she said, yes, it's been, she said that it should have been paid years ago. A loan that was not being paid on, but it looked to me as if from the people, the wealthy people, white people are starting moving out, black people starting moving in, us poor people, they're gaining here it is.
Y'all got some rough issues. Mobley, we're gonna, we're gonna have to close it out. I'd like to, for, uh, pastor, uh, one of pastors, whoever, to close out with prayer after Mobley. And, uh, we will look forward to dealing with this again. Mobley?
On the, on the voting situation, you recall when you and I walked the streets of a husky and tried to promote people to vote, right? And most of the doors were slamming in our face. But the problem you have with voting, just like I hear this morning, in Birmingham, Alabama, we wanted a major ballot field for the civil rights movement. I think they said seventy-five percent of Birmingham is black. But only like twenty-five percent of the people in Birmingham go out to vote. And the major problem that I have with most people that go to the poll, you know what they say? I done what I, I done my duty. I went to the poll and voted. I could care less what they do. The problem is, a lot of, the other people saying, I ain't going because they're gonna do what they wanna do. When you cast your vote, that are part of your constitutional right. You have to be instilled and motivated to make the people that you vote for respect your vote. And that's why the majority of the people today do not go to vote because they don't feel that they have the capability to make the people that they vote for respect their vote. So, when you teach them how to make the people respect their vote, then they'll go back to vote.
Okay, so, look, this concludes the discussion, the debate forum. Thank you so much for coming out. God bless y'all. I would like for somebody to end up in prayer. Brother's right here, if you would close us out in prayer, and, uh, we're good to go.